...at 116 West Bridge Street, August the 20th, 2013. We're calling the meeting to order. I'd like to invite Pastor Mike Corb from the First Baptist Church of Granbury to lead us in our invocation, followed by the pledge allegiance, and also followed by the Texas pledge.
Let's pray. Dear most gracious heavenly Father, we come before you this afternoon to thank you for your grace and for your love. God, we thank you for all that you have bestowed upon us and for the opportunities that we have to serve you and to serve this great city called Granbury, Texas. Father, we call upon you and upon your presence. And Lord, we know that you've called us to love and to pray for our officials and those that you've put in authority over us. And so, Father, we ask for that. We ask that you would give them wisdom and discernment as they debate and as they talk about the issues at hand. Father, would you grant them your wisdom? Would you grant them your grace? And Father, would the words that flow from our mouths be pleasing in your sight? And would the verdicts and the decisions that are made this evening be pleasing to you? Father, as we think about what you would desire for us and for the city and for the people who make up this city, and so, Father, we're so thankful for all that you have given us. And may you be glorified in this meeting this evening and in the decisions that are made here, for it's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Will you follow me in the pledges? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. At this time, I'd like to call upon the Granbury Citizens Police Academy alumni to make a presentation.
This group of people are presenting to you a check in kind for $35,831 and change, which represents volunteer hours and time that this group has put in for the city of Granbury in this last year. Some of the extra time from previous years is that we have a Citizens on Patrol group, of which three of these folks here are members of, that y'all have provided a car and these people cruise the city and look for mouth fees, in which, of course, we don't have any. But they do just got a new car, and we want to thank you. Not a new car for them, not a new car, new car. But we're happy to have the one that we have, and the other one died in the parking lot over by the beach several weeks ago. So we would like to present to you this check for $35,831.
Thank you very much.
Some of the things we do is also we work all the parades. We do fundraising. We raised some money for Chad and Lance McLean in the last month or so. We also donated monies to the PD, so they have a command center pop-up tent now that they use for the parades, so they can be out of the sun and manage the process of the parade. So that's some of the things we've done in the last year. Thank you.
We do appreciate your volunteer service. We do appreciate all your volunteer services out there. I know, as you mentioned, your last six months, maybe even longer, it's been really crowded, and we have needed that type of support and help out there. So once again, we do appreciate everything you do for the city of Granbury. You are good representation of the city of Granbury. Thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Council, you've all had a copy of the consent agenda and seen all the items on there. We've got approval of the council minutes of the regular meeting of August 6, 2013, and the minutes of the special meeting of August 13, 2013. We're going to strike number one there, which is not going to happen now, and going to number two was to consider and approve the closure of the streets for these following events, for the Granbury High School homecoming, and also for the annual Brazos River Corvette Club Festival, and for the Harvest Moon Festival. Also, the consider request of the staff to write off inactive utility accounts, which we do every year, and the balance of the outstanding for one year or more. And number four, to consider and approve the opening of the new checking account for the city's bank depository, First National Bank, for the separate accounting of donations received for the Lake Granbury Coalition. Council, do you have any concerns or discussion concerning the consent agenda? With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. I've got a motion by Councilman Couch. I've got a second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Those consent agenda items are passed. We'll next move into the deliberation agenda. The first one being that consider and approve a by-board contract with LMC Corp. for $253,768.22. This is to purchase a new bar screen for the city wastewater treatment plant. Call upon Alva Cox there to enlighten the council on this item.
Yes, sir. I'll show you a couple pictures, so everybody knows what a bar screen is, because always, every time I start talking about it, everybody just kind of looks at me kind of funny. But actually, the bar screen, here it is right here. This actually, it's a fine bar screen that's going to go in, and what it does is it helps prevent all the solids and other things that accumulate in there. And basically, it's about a quarter inch is what it is in the actual debris removal. And what this does is obviously, again, it takes out everything. The only thing that can get through, some of the fines can still get through, but basically, through the treatment process, it'll settle out. It'll also help with the, like I said, with the odors and things like that by getting some of the bigger things out of it. And then the other thing that it does is it automatically bags, so everything stays enclosed as well, and it goes into a dumpster. That way, none of it gets out into the air where people smell it. So anytime, like right now, we have, we have actually one bar screen, we have, there's the old one right there. And as you can see, that's about an inch gap, inch and a half. So as you can see, anytime we have to bypass our other bar screen when it's going through, you get some severe solids coming through, and basically, that'll tear my pumps up all through there. I have roughly about 40, 50 pumps that's working inside of this thing. And with those solids going through, it'll completely destroy them. It'll get in, chew up the impellers where we have to do that. So it causes a lot of, a lot of maintenance work for us. So what this does too is, and again, due to the growth with the solids that are coming through, we are seeing a lot more solids coming in. This is something that we definitely need down there for odor control and as well as helping the operation of the plant as it grows. This kind of keeps it, again, keeps the manpower to a minimum. Again, this one goes down, which we have to clean them. And when you start going back and forth, and as you can see, I don't know if you can see the picture real well, but you know, you can see this screen compared to that other screen. So when this one's running, you know, it's running pretty good, when we take it down or it breaks down, we have to bypass it into the bigger one, which causes issues later on down the line. The finances for this is actually coming out of the impact fees, which we roughly have about $878,000 in that fund. So, any questions?
You said it would help the odor?
It will help the odor, yes, sir.
I tell you, I don't know what happened, but the last two, three weeks, even the islands now, you can smell it when you first go in there. Canly Bay's been that way for over a year. So this will do it. This will take care of it.
It's going to help it. This is a sewer plant. You have to understand, it is a sewer plant. So there's going to be odors from time to time, obviously, what we handle. So you're going to have that, but yes, it's going to help. And it's going to help all the way over to our pumps and things like that, which is going to save us a lot of money on the pumps and things like that, because all these pumps are very expensive that we have to use. And when we have to take them down or if they get into our, well, about six, eight months ago, we had our clarifiers, actually, tore our clarifiers up. I mean, that's thousands of dollars that, you know, that it cost us to do that.
I know we have bought several parts for that in the last three years. And everyone I'm supposed to have to smell and seem like it helps it for about 90 days, and it's back again.
You're going to get it from time to time. I mean, there's nothing foolproof with these plants. I mean, we've heard, you know, like I said, we've heard different engineering groups and everything else. But I mean, you're going to have that. Again, it's a wastewater plant. But I will tell you this, if you drive by, for example, go down I-30 and heading towards Arlington, and you get in between Arlington and Fort Worth, Village Creek, you're about five miles from that plant, and it will knock you down. And so, or if you go by Singleton going 35, it's the same thing. You smell it on I-30, again, you're four or five miles away.
You're saying we're a lot better off, is what you're saying, Alva.
Yes, sir. We're doing, we're doing really well for, I've been out to hundreds of wastewater treatment plants, and I'm just, a lot of them, trust me, you know they're there before you even see it. So at least ours, you have to see it before you know it's there. So there's a plus.
Alva, with the, with the price of this thing, what do we do with the old one? Do we have a, do we sell it for scrap metal, or what is it?
No, sir. We keep both.
Oh, you're keeping both of them?
Yes, sir. That way, again, you can alternate them, because that's what's going to happen. You're going to go with both of them during maintenance time. Again, we can shift them back and forth. So yeah, it's, we're definitely going to keep them.
So right now, we don't shift with anything? We just stop it?
You've seen that old bar screen that we had. We have to shift into that, because that's the only way we have to. And when you do that, it causes a problem.
Very good. Council, any more discussion for Alva? Thank you, Alva. With that, I'll entertain a motion to, to approve the by-board contract with LMC Corporation for $253,768.22. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion from Councilman Perkel. I have a second by Councilman Couch. Council, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. That does approve. The next item is to discuss the status of the Opera House redevelopment project and consider and approve any recommendation from the Opera House Redevelopment Committee. We met again with the committee this week, and we actually got to do a tour of the Opera House out there. And I'm going to let Wayne McKeffen kind of enlighten you what we've seen and what we heard and what we're doing going forward. Go ahead, Wayne.
Well, first of all, we reviewed the Wi-Fi plan that was put forth, that we brought forth to the council and decided that the Wi-Fi plan was really something we didn't want to do. And so, we're going to not install that sophisticated a Wi-Fi system and go with a more Wi-Fi system like we have here in the, in the chamber and in the city hall. So it'll be significantly cheaper, and we've, and Tony Tobe will go back and get a bid on that, that'll probably be 20% of what that cost would have been. Additionally, we looked at the security cameras, we looked at the burglar alarms, everything that we were looking at that was additional cost, and we cut the security cameras in about half of what was recommended, because we felt, felt like there was too many cameras in the, in the Opera House. And trying to really control the cost on those particular items, we left most of the security, the burglar alarms in place. I don't think we cut many of it. So we were going through the review process on that, and we think it's going to be adequate and not a problem going forward. Update on the chairs that we are having redone. We have stripped the chairs, we've, well, we've actually taken them all apart, we have stripped the chairs, we have then restained the chairs, we are painting the metal parts on the chairs and beginning to put, put them back together with new upholstery. We're only spending about $100 per chair, which some bids came in at $200 per chair. So we're saving some money there, a significant amount on 300 chairs. And so that process is also going well. We continued as the Opera House Committee to then go over and review the, or just to take a tour of the Opera House and how it's coming. It's coming very well. It's going, it's getting along very well. If you've gone over there and looked behind the Opera House, there's a great big building back there now. And it's coming together well. We went through some of the, the framing is up inside the Opera House. The orchestra pit and the theater pit underneath is in place, the stage is in place, rehearsal hall is in place, the, the top roof has been put, all the structure on the outside of the wall is up. So while certainly they're not ready to commit, there's a certain feeling that we're way ahead of schedule, but they're, right now, they're saying we're going to wait until we get a little closer to really define what that is. But we feel really good about the progress of the Opera House. And we did find some things that we would like to change that, as we were going through, that we think could be improving the flow of, of how things work in the Opera House. And so it was a, it was an interesting tour, and we're looking forward to an opening. And that's sort of what's going on in that.
Thank you, Wayne. Council, is there any questions or concerns that you want to address for Wayne?
Who's doing the cheers, Wayne?
Mr. Wood.
The cheers, who's doing them? Rebuilding them?
The cheers?
Cheers.
Well, we have Dennis the Flying Horse Company, okay, Dennis Frenchon, he's actually the one on the contract, but we have some other people, we hired some other people to help. And so we're actually doing that through this company.
Local people are?
Local people. In fact, they're all of them.
Thank you, Council. No more questions? This was a discussion item, no action taken there. Next item is to discuss and consider a resolution authorizing the Mayor Protem to execute an engagement letter with Haynes and Boone's LLP to serve as legal, as the lead legal counsel in any hearings before the TCEQ. As you all know, we've been talking and discussing about joining with the Coalition to, to engage with attorneys Haynes and Boone's, and I think we've done that. We've gotten, worked through all the particulars, we've got the money commitments, and so we're now down to where we want to go ahead and sign the engagement letter. Council, is there any discussion on this matter? Mr. Parsons.
Been turned on.
There you go.
There we go. I'm assuming there's, what it says in here, there's going to be three different engagement letters, one signed by us, one signed by the county, and one signed by the other member of the Coalition. In reading this, I think we need to indicate in the, in the first paragraph there called client relationship, that the city of Granbury currently has separate counsel. We had a discussion with our counsel and with H&amp;B about that, and that they were supposed to get together and work out the responsibilities and what each one of them are going to be doing, so.
They have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow morning to do that. And they, I talked to Ann today of Haynes and Boone, and she says she has no, no concern that they can't work that out. And so, and Ken said the same thing, so.
But I would like, I would like in the client relationship, where they talk about us having other counsel in that part, that we go ahead and name our counsel and make sure that that issue's taken, taken care of. So the status of the Ken Ramirez agreement is that they're meeting and going to work on that tomorrow, right? I, for one, I would prefer that we take out the representation of Haynes and Boone in front of the TCEQ. I'm happy with our attorney there. I would prefer that Haynes and Boone's and the dollars we invest in this be more towards an investigation of other legal avenues for protecting the water levels. The TCEQ and that process is pretty straightforward and cut and dry. There's going to be some 50 to 60 people that are contesting their right, including us, including the city, and including the LGWA. All of us will be arguing that the BRA doesn't deserve nor should they get the water that they're asking for. Having said that, it's clear, it's my opinion that whether or not the BRA gets the water or not, we as a city and we as a county are pretty much over a barrel. Our only option, our only opportunity then would be to become adversarial to the BRA as it relates to other issues. And I think you're going to have to do that. So I hate to see us spend the high-powered dollars with a firm in the, in the TCEQ process when we have a, when the city has representation that has been involved in water rights and water litigation for years. I would also contend that we need to probably try to maximize this contract, if we continue with this contract, that we need to maximize this contract at $300,000. I think we need to offer that to Haynes and Boone. Here's $300,000, get us through the contested hearing, and we'll be happy. We're going to have a lot of expenses. I mean, this is a open-ended check. They're already telling us it's $500,000. I hope that we can figure out a way to make it work. But we're writing an open check with this, with this agreement with those guys, so. And they, they have not told us, as a matter of fact, my issue with this firm is that they have no water rights experience. They have no one on their staff that has been involved in Texas water rights. They've been involved in TCEQ, they've been involved in disputes or whatever with the BRA, but they have no water rights expertise on their staff. I would prefer that they have water rights, and we're going to try to, are we saying they're going to represent us on Monday? And we don't even have an agreement, and we're funded up with this? I'm a little apprehensive about that. Then I would also direct your attention to paragraph eight in that agreement, and I think it's just a typo on their part. They, they refer in that type in eight to LGWA, and that should be to the city of Granbury.
Which one was that, Mr. Parsons?
In paragraph eight. In their conclusion, we're pleased to have this opportunity to represent LGWA. That would probably be the wording they want in LGWA agreement, since there are going to be agreements for all three people. So the city's already spent money on our legal counsel, and we've already spent money for a hydrologist to make an examination of the BRA plan. I hope that in going forward, the city receives credit for that effort. And then, if it's going into this, Haynes and Boone are going to get experts to represent them. How many, do we have any idea of what that is, how much, what those dollars are, how that's going to work? So I'd like to see a cap of $300,000 put on the deal.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Council, any more discussion?
I would, I would like to say a few words, Mayor Protem.
Councilman Allen?
We've all been in the meetings in the back, several of y'all been out here the last three or four meetings. This thing just keeps getting put off and put off and put off. And we are the council for the city, and we should have brought all these questions up when we had them down here twice. And we should make notes, not that I'm scolding Mickey by no means, because I've done the same myself, wished I'd asked a question after the fact. But folks, we spent $3.4 million for an Opera House. We spent $250,000 the first year on the Langdon Center, $100,000 budget. We've got pipes sticking out of the ground, been in there for four years, that we've got in lawsuit over. And if we had spent $100,000 a year to fight this thing, I think it's worth it. You're, you're an attorney. Would you cap a case like this and say you guarantee us to win it and all that stuff? Or at the end of 300, I think the city's going to come back to us and let us know if we had a good case to go forward or not. And if they're not going to represent us down there, are they going to represent, and they are a party of, is the county and the waterfront association? So are we being billed for that and not being represented by them, just by what you were saying? Is that correct?
Are you answering the question?
Yes, sir. I'm asking a question to Mickey.
Council, Mr. Mickey?
So you're saying, what the?
Well, you said you didn't want to represent us Monday.
How can they be ready?
Well, I think.
They don't, they don't have anyone on their staff that's water rights. And I would contend, Tony, that I've been raising that issue about their lack of expertise in Texas water rights ever since the very beginning meeting.
You did, you did in the back. You have.
I did.
Absolutely. And I agree with you, Mickey, but I mean, if that was an issue that we, we're getting ready to vote on, I mean, I think we should have worked this out way before time to sign a contract, is all I'm saying.
I'm in, I don't think that we need Haynes and Boone in the TCEQ process at this point in time, that they will not have, that, that particular function of ALJs and how that works is going to be pretty cut and dried. It's going to be people showing up with hydrologists to argue for it one way or the other. There's going to be people all up and down the Brazos River Basin, from Dow Chemical and the city of Galveston all the way north, that are, that are opposed to that granting of those additional water rights. And we're definitely opposed to that, and the city's been active and working hard towards that. I just hate to see us take our limited funds and use those as a part of the TCEQ process. I would prefer that those funds be saved and pushed into a legal issue with the BRA, either coming up with some issue that we can hang our hat on, because whether they get the water or not, the city of Granbury and Hood County is still stuck here with or without water. If they get water, that's fine. We're still stuck with a half survey and a, and a closed hydro plant. If they don't get the water, we're still stuck with a hydro plant shut down and a half report. We're not getting any more water or getting our issue solved. The TCEQ and that process is not going to solve the issue for us.
I agree with what you're saying, but if you're members, Ann Johnson said they want to be the lead attorney.
Exactly.
Okay. And what I, my question is back, if, if they're going to represent the Hood County in the waterfront on Monday, all they're doing is filling out paper, it gets their change of name over from their attorney to them. You're saying not to do that at that time for us?
They, they won't be able to represent LGWA. LGWA has sent in their letter, and they have an attorney that's going to show up Monday. I hope they do. The county, the county has a representative that they're going to have show up for that.
I'm not for sure if the county is or not. I, I'm talking with the judge, and is the judge here tonight, or y'all seen him? But I believe that what he said was that, or it might have been Steve Berry, one of them, said that their understanding was that they were going to take it, change it, and do it as a, all three of us together, not city as one, waterfront as one, or the county as one. And that was my understanding on it.
I would, I would suggest that all parties involved proceed to make sure that they're a part of the contested hearing. Once you're a member, that, once you're a member of the contested hearing, then you can drop out and consolidate. And I'm not the advocate. The coalition works, but we're, I think we're moving the money towards the wrong issue. The money issue, the money issue is not TCEQ and the granting of the water. The, the money issue for us is dealing with the BRA and getting them to change their management and their operation plan.
That I agree with, and, and I'm only going by what was told in, in our session with them twice. Maybe some other council person would like to speak on it.
Council, I would like to just address the, the fact that when we raised the $300,000 with the combination of the three different county, the city, and the homeowners association, it was, it was the understanding that that money was going to be earmarked, put back pretty much, and, and might not even be hardly used, any of it in this, in the Monday thing, because we have, we are going to retain Ken Ramirez. Ken Ramirez has already identified it through a voice, a conference call to them that he feels like he is the water expert, which Mr. Councilman Parsons is alluding to. And I think he is our best water attorney, and that's why we have retained him to stay with the Boones and Haynes, because we feel confident in him, and he's taken us this far. But we're right now voting on taking the money that we have worked really hard to get, to put together, and to hire a, a legal form or to form the coalition with a legal representation that fits everybody, that, that everybody can, can utilize through this process, whether we get into more strenuous. more strenuous debates or whatever we get into. And they're experts in that field. They have done that kind of work. I think everybody has looked at their credentials, and no doubt that they are people that are a firm that can fight the battle for whatever it is that we face down the line. But the money's put aside. It may not be used... It may not get all used till, say, January. So, I don't know exactly. Nobody's been able to tell us that. Yes, they have said it could multiply up to 500,000. That worries me there somewhat, but they've also said that you can bail out at any time. So, you spend your 100,000, which we would probably spend on attorneys due out the cases, whether we go with Ramirez or whatever, and get to where we want to be with this thing. So, we're looking at just joining in two things. Joining in with a coalition where we have a lot bigger stand. We have a lot more, what they call, guns in the fight. And we also have some experts in other categories that we don't have. And Ramirez is a water expert, and he is... Don't get me wrong. He's a good attorney. So, that's the way I see it, counsel, right now. Anybody say any differently? Mr. Couch, I see you're wanting to say something there.
Well, this is nuclear with everybody. It's going to be a working process. And even though we don't technically have a cap on it, it's going to be our decision whether or not we want to go further. So, in that sense, we do... I think we do control that. And I'm looking forward to seeing what they will produce. I know that in the discussions that they were going to look at many options in the first few months as far as avenues that might be beneficial. I think that there's been a unity that has been created here, and I think it's important that we seize upon that. The county's set up with 100,000, and we've had a lot of individuals come together with their 100,000 dollars. And for me, I think it's important that we move forward with this. And I think over the next few months, we're going to see whether or not this is beneficial enough for the city to continue in the coalition. I appreciate Mickey's conservative approach to this, that his eyes are on, I guess, the efficiency of the law firm and how they will represent us. I think that there's a lot of merit in that analysis. So, with that...
And one thing we don't lose focus on, and it's on the agenda for later on tonight here, is that, you know, we're going to be set up with a steering committee that's going to have the opportunity going forward to come up with some of these decisions and to possibly even change some of these stuff. I mean, we've got a contract that we're going to sign, and it's pretty binding, but there's a lot of things that the steering committee is going to do going forward and keep each correlation... Each person, each group informed so that they can have input also into this thing and help them in going in the direction that they need to go. So, I think it's good representation for the present money. I don't know if we'd want to cap that or cap it or whatever, but right now with what we're spending, I think it's a pretty good representation. Counsel, any more discussion? Mr. Perkel?
Well, I feel that we're in this far. We don't have to... We've got the 300,000. We're not saying we're going to spend it for themselves. We can go into this and see exactly, and knowing the gentlemen, I'm sure, and ladies that are going to be nominated for this, they're going to watch the pennies, because it's a penny situation. But if we can go ahead and see what they're going to do, what we're going to get for our money, then at that point, you know, we can make a bunch, you know? So, we lost 100,000. You know, I mean, we're going to lose 100,000 if we have tornadoes come through or floods or whatever. But we've got to do something, get together to show that we have a unity to go forward and see what we can do. Again, the best engineer still is the one that we have hired. I was with him. And he's going to be... I would imagine he'll probably be the head before he's making the presentation there, because he's the only one that I know of. That's the way I feel.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel, any more discussion? With that, we'll move into... I would recommend a resolution or consider the approval of the resolution authorizing the Mayor Protim to execute an engagement letter with Hanes and Boone's LLP to serve as the legal counsel in the hearings before the TCEQ.
Motion.
I have a motion by Counselman Allen. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Counselman Couch. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That resolution does pass. Our next item on the agenda is to discuss and consider an agreement creating the Lake Granbury Coalition a joint partnership with Hood County and the Lake Granbury Waterfront Owners Association to contest the BRA's application for a water management permit filed with the TCEQ, which goes along with what we've been discussing right now. Counsel, any discussion on this item?
Yes.
Counselman Couch?
Is this the nomination?
No. No, man.
No.
Okay.
Discussion.
Never mind.
Yes, I have some...
Got some discussion from Mr....
In my review of the agreement for the creation of the coalition, I have some questions about what is the legal and IRS status of the Lake Granbury Waterfront Owners Association? Is that an association strictly by agreement? Or do they have... Is there an association at the state level, or what is that? And then, I assume they have 501(c)(3) status?
We have tried to locate if they have 501(c) status. We've been unable to.
Okay. And they have no formally association paperwork?
Not at all.
Okay. All right. All right.
And if I would urge that the waterfront, if they have some documentation otherwise, then if we've looked...
It probably should be part of the steering committee also, if they review that.
And I appreciate... I mean, the hard work and effort that's gone into this whole process, I certainly appreciate that, and people taking their time and effort and spending their hard-earned cash to be supportive of this. Would the city be held accountable, liable for actions of LGWA outside of this agreement? Or how could that be done?
I think the city, as part of the agreement, could be held liable for actions of the steering committee, but not of outside actions of the coalition. Outside of the...
As far as the agreement itself and C, we're going to... As an elected official, I'm somewhat uncomfortable with a steering committee in which I'm going to be held accountable for the seventh man. It's an interesting issue to think that I have to stand up to get elected and spend the money, but then I show up, and the decision's going to be made by the seventh man. That's going to be a little hard to hold. But then, in 4C, section 4C, where it talks about refunding pro rata shares, I would like to see that that paragraph be changed to say that the 100,000, the initial 100,000 dollars is at risk. There's no refunding of the initial 100,000. In other words, what could happen, as I'm reading 4C, is that we could make this agreement today, and tomorrow the city could come back and say we want 100,000 back, or any of the entities involved. So, if we're going to put skin in the game, let's make sure everybody puts their skin in the game and stays in the game through that 100,000. Then at that point in time, when Hanes and Boone come back, say, well, we need this attorney, or we need this, we need this expert here, we need this expert there, then everybody can say, okay, we're willing to pony up, or we want to get out of this. It's going past where we want to be. I will tell you that as a city councilman sitting here, having lived on the lake for 26 years, I'm committed to the city fighting this issue. I'm committed to the city being a part of a resolution to that. I would hope that that means that the BRA doesn't get 400,000. They can't even supply the water they have now. I would hope that out of this process, the city is able to negotiate some kind of water level that makes it so that we can use our boats, so we can use that process. So, I would like to see that there is no withdrawal of the initial funds, and will the city... If the city brings in, I guess this may be for the seven-man group, but if we bring in and we commit our hydrology expert and our hydrology that we paid for, the city would receive credit for that. Got that?
Counsel, I've got a question. Is that possible? Mr. Allen? Is that possible with our steering committee to do those things through that steering committee, the way you read it?
When I wrote the agreement, when I wrote 4C, my logic behind that was that if the city got into this thing, a month into it, decided that they didn't want to participate anymore, but you had not paid your 100,000, that you'd get your balance back, that you wouldn't lose much, even after... And it wasn't just the city. I wrote it so the county wanted to do the same thing. That was my logic behind it, so that you wouldn't put the whole 100,000 in there. And if you want to change that, then I can certainly draft that language to change it. But that was my logic when I wrote that.
I understand that. But it's problematic that we're going to commit, and then two days later, I mean, let's... I think the people here tonight are ready to commit their 100,000. City's ready to commit theirs, and I suppose the county's going to do that. Let's commit our 100,000 and spend it.
And wasn't that a condition of Hanes and Boone, that they wanted to see the 300 in the fund?
They do send the engagement letter.
So, if we can put it in there and then take it out the next day, how is that?
Well, in the engagement letter, it also says that if you decide to terminate your services, it's in the back part of the engagement letter.
Counsel, any more discussion on this item?
I would like to...
Mr. Allen?
I'd like to ask Joe Williams about the 501(c)(4), if they are 501(c) or not.
Joe, if you would, please come up to the podium here and announce your name and your address and allow you to speak.
I'm Joe Williams, president of LGWA, 2814 River Ridge Court. If it's okay, I would like for our treasurer, who has very close relations to our CPA, to speak with you in that regard, if that's okay?
Thank you.
We...
Go ahead and introduce yourself, please.
I'm Tracy Johnson, treasurer of LGWA. We have been working very intently to try to get everything wrapped up with the 501(c)(3) status, because like every other nonprofit, we are being reviewed because of the status. We have done all of the tax filings. The CPA has worked on it. We have gotten our letter, and it is being... It's under review at the time. So, we are... We have done everything humanly possible to get everything done.
Thank you, Tracy. And that just answers a question, because some people have tried to find that through the internet, and if you can't see it out there, then it raises a question. Maybe we're not looking for it. And it's not criticized, it's just saying we didn't see it there, but we had heard that it was a 501(c)(3). So, that clears that up for us. Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
Counsel, any more questions before they leave? Thank you.
Mayor Protim, I've got one more.
Yes, Mr. Allen.
Well, Mr. Parsons was talking about there on that 100,000. If it's changed the way he's saying it, in other words, that money would be there, and we couldn't come back, and we couldn't stop them anytime, unless maybe we had to have it.
Well, you're going to... You could after the 100,000.
But the way it's written now, let's say they got 100, we got 100, the county got 100, 300. Let's say 150 into this thing, because, hey, you're not doing the job. The way it's written now, we could get out of the back.
Well, I would think you would have it so that if all three of you said, let's quit, we could all quit and split it out.
The way you're saying it, it's...
All three of us are in it until we make that three-people decision.
Three hundred, like, one way or the other.
Yeah, well, you're either going to get in the process and go forward with it, or all three of you are going to say, forget it.
And I can see the point that we don't want a knee-jerk reaction if something didn't. If it came up unexpectedly in a month and we get nervous, I think, yeah, if we're going to get in, let's get in, and let's run through that 300,000.
And when it comes time to spend 301,000, that's the decision. That's where you go.
I see the point.
Counsel, any more discussion? With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement creating the Lake Granbury Coalition a joint partnership with Hood County and the Lake Granbury Waterfront Owners Association to contest the BRA's application for a water management permit filed with the TCEQ submitting... Or making the changes on section four, number C, which was suggested by Counselman Parsons. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion by Counselman Parsons. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Counselman Couch? Any more discussion?
Yes. I am... I had at my disposal on my Dropbox a copy of an agreement for the creation of the coalition to be known. Now, then, I find on my desk here an Ann Johnson revision, which I've not had time to review. And I would be disinclined to vote on that one at this point in time. If we're talking about the agreement that was in the original one, then I'm fine with
Counselman Parsons, I don't know what was on Dropbox, but what I can tell you is that the one that has Ann Johnson provisions came in late yesterday.
Uh-huh.
The revisions are only three. They're highlighted in yellow.
Okay.
And everything else is exactly the same as the one that I sent down. And the first provision is that they want to add some language to the... Section 1g, there, it's in yellow. It says, "The at-large members shall be an authorized agent, representative of the city, the county, and LGWA." They want this language, because that's going to pull that seventh person into the attorney-client privilege. And so, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Their next change you see is in section 2b, and they add a line there that says, "Such deposits shall be made by each member as soon as practically," where I just had originally everybody make the initial deposit. They put a time on it. On the next page of section 2e, this is kind of a big change. They say here that rather that they... You can see there, highlighted in yellow, they changed the sentence, "The parties agree to continue membership in the coalition." This is a paragraph I had put in here, because my thought was, when I drafted it, was that going forward, after the initial 300,000 deposit made by the three parties, that if one group didn't pay anymore, they should be... Their membership should be temporarily suspended until they pay, because it didn't seem right to me if they don't pay that they get to vote.
Right.
So, they changed that language from an automatic suspension to a permissive suspension based on the majority of the steering committee. And I don't know if counsel's comfortable with that language or not, but that's the change.
So, it gives them 90 additional days to raise funding?
Yes. And then, it also... Rather than the suspension becoming automatic, you don't pay the... You don't pay your sheriff's legal bill, then it's... The suspension only takes effect if the majority of the steering committee will vote to suspend that member. And so, it's more of a permissive suspension as opposed to automatic. The final change they made, you see in section 3d, it's in yellow there. Originally, in my draft, I said that if a new party wanted to join the coalition, that they had to fulfill three obligations. First, they had to be approved by a majority vote of the members of the steering committee. That didn't change. The entity must be... And my second one, which they did change, I said that the new group should have to put up 100,000 to match the initial investment of the original party. They changed that to refund into the... The new group's deposit fund, into litigation fund, and that amount to be determined by a majority of the steering committee. Which their change would allow any new group to deposit whatever the steering committee says. So, if the majority of the steering committee said they only have to deposit 10 grand, that would get them in. And so, that's, again, that's a change that counsel has to decide if you want to accept it or not. accept Ann Johnson's change or not.
I think it could be 100,000. You're bringing up your money.
But like Stuart says, if the count, if the steering committee could, they could say that very well, though, that that's what.
I thought it was, in reading that paragraph, I agree with 100,000, but it probably should be 100,000 plus any additional expenditure at that point. Or so if you wait, and we've already spent 500,000, and then to get in the building, you've got to come up with whatever that would be for this. The issue I might have with E there, section 2E, talks about within 90 days, and we're only talking about a, about an eight-month process total anyway, right? September, October, November, December, January?
You're right, and that's.
So it's like.
I would say that, my understanding that you communicated to Ann Johnson, we don't put the care for her, and she's got money, like our version of that.
Okay. All right, so having said that, I would move that we have, can I make the motion?
Well, we have a, we have a motion, and we have to strike the motion.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
Okay.
Who's second?
Who's second there?
Okay, all right. I will make a motion that we approve the Ann Johnson revised coalition agreement, including section 1G, including section 2B, 2E, that that 90-day period be drawn down to 30 days. And then in section 3D, that it, the entity be prepared to immediately deposit an amount equal to its pro rata share of expenditures to date. And also then, what was that, 4C, that the initial participants and their 100,000 dollars are committed funds and would only be dispersed if there's a complete abolition of the coalition.
Can you explain, can you explain it?
Which one? The 4C is that once we, in other words, we form this coalition, we've each put in 100,000, that's what we've got. And then at some point in time, if we all decide the coalition's not working, we're all out. And then the, then if there's any remainder of 100,000, it can go back to each group.
Well, I need some clarification.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Couch.
So, Mr. Parsons, are you saying that we would strike the edit by Ms. Johnson on D, where the suspension must be approved by a majority?
3D.
3E.
3E.
Two.
Three, and 3D, is that where you are, 3D?
I just need clarification that what we're passing.
Okay. In section 3, I think it talks about people becoming members, additional parties becoming members of the coalition. And three, section 3, paragraph D, letter number 2, "The entity must be prepared to immediately draw, deposit funds into the litigation fund in an amount to be determined by a majority of the steering committee." I am suggesting that that would read, "The entity must be prepared to immediately deposit funds into the litigation fund in amount equal to its pro rata shares of expenditures to date."
Okay. His question was on 2E.
2E, okay.
The last paragraph with suspension, where are we at with the suspension?
I would, assuming that would continue, it's just shortening the number of days from 90 to 30. So the suspension would accrue at 30 days and not 90.
Okay, but the way this reads is that the suspension is subject to a vote, and I have a problem with that.
I will amend my motion to strike that last sentence. "Suspension must be approved by a majority of the remaining members of the steering committee, excluding the representatives of parties that are not going to contribute an equal share of funds." That work?
Councilman Parsons, do you want to change the very first yellow in 2E from "may" to "shall"? See the sentence currently?
Okay.
Required to reach continued membership of the coalition, "may" be suspended.
And you're in, what, I'm sorry now.
2E.
2E.
Two.
You just dropped the last one.
Where you highlighted "may."
The word "may," the very first word.
Oh, "shall be suspended," okay, all right, "shall be suspended."
You're good with "shall."
Hey, I do have a question for you, but.
Councilman Allen.
Yeah, turn of thinking. Here, let's say that we've been to 300, and they come back and they say, "We need another 200 or 100," whatever that number is. Let's say the city says, "We went up with no money," or the county, or the waterfront. At that point, what happens then? They get off of that committee, or how does that work? And I think that would be very difficult.
Well, in my vision, when I wrote the contract, was that when the bills come due, if another member or is in the city, let's just use the city, if the city does pay the bill, or because it refuses to pay, or it can't pay, or whatever, then the city members on the coalition steering committee don't get to vote anymore.
Right.
Until they pay the money. And then once the city pays the money, they vote. And then, so at that point, you see, so hypothetically, in this scenario, if the Haynes and Boon came back and said, "We need another 100,000," which would be.
Thirty-three, thirty-three, thirty-three.
You know, thirty-three, thirty-three, thirty-three. If they said, "We're not going to pay the thirty-three," then you have a decision to make, whether you're going to get out of the coalition, or are you just going to be suspended and not vote? And that would be the decision to make. The third option would be to pay the thirty-three.
And that covers what Mr. Parsons was saying on the 2E.
Yeah, 2E says that if you don't pay your bills, you don't get to vote.
Okay.
Basically, you put a whole county. He broadened it a little bit, because I didn't have a 30-day window.
Yeah.
I wanted money on time. That's a 30-day window.
So we have a motion by Councilman Parsons. I hope he got all that. Do we have a second? Do we have a second by Councilman Allen? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That does pass with the changes to the agreement. Now, counsel, our next item is to appoint two members of the city council to serve on the steering committee of the Lake Granberry Coalition. Now, my question to the counselor here, does that exclude our city manager?
No, I think the agreement was council members.
Represented as well.
Okay, well, that's the way it appears to counsel, so.
You're saying Wayne could be on or could not be on?
He can be on. The motion says councilman, that's why I'm asking.
If you look at section 1, letter D, tells you about the breakout of who's going to be on there, and letter B, that shall be members of the city council of the city of Granbury, that shall be appointed to serve with pleasure of the council. I wrote that with the intention that it would be two members of the council, and that they need to replace whatever the council wants.
Okay. So with that said, we're going to appoint two members of the city council to serve on the steering committee of the Lake Granberry Coalition. Counsel, what I'd like to do is, at this time, we'll take nominations, raise your hand and be recognized, and I'll take your nominations. D? Councilman Couch?
Well, I would, I think Mickey's made some really valid points tonight, and I think it's important that we have a critical eye on the law firm and the process, and I would hope that Mr. Parsons would consider serving on that committee, and I'd nominate him.
Yeah, we have a nomination of Mickey Parsons. Do I have any more nominations? I'm looking for two.
I'd like to nominate Ray Couch.
We have Mr. Couch nominated.
I nominate Wayne Captain.
Can't, you can't. But I'd like to nominate, I'd like to nominate Mr. Allen, Councilman Allen. So, any more nominations? Hey, counsel, we've got Councilman Parsons, Councilman Couch, and Councilman Allen. With a show of hands, who nominates Councilman Parsons? That's the majority, so Councilman Parsons is one of them. Our next candidate, our next up, is Councilman Couch. With a show of hands, how many approve or nominate Councilman Couch? Anan. We got Councilman Parsons and Councilman Couch as our steering committee. So with that said, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Councilman Parsons, Councilman Couch to the steering committee. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Couch. I'll second.
I'll second that.
I've got to second, I've got to second, I've still got to vote here.
You're going to say, "Okay."
With that said, is there any more discussion, counsel? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Those are representatives for the steering committee. At this time, and I'll declare, the Granberry City Councils now will be convening to open session, and that all members except the mayor Pratt are present. The city council will now go into the closed session pursuant to the provisions of the Texas Government Code in accordance with the authority contained in the following sections, section 551, point 071, consultation with the attorney, and section 551, point 074, personnel. The council will now reconvene into open session. There was no action taken back in executive session. This time, if counsel has no more comments, this counsel may be adjourned.